Andrew.
I don't know.
How about the, are we on?
Yep. Okay, and welcome to the May ninth, twenty twenty-three Charlton Board of Selectments meeting. The time is six thirty. We could all stand and rise in flag of allegiance.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first thing we have on our agenda is the reorganization of the board. But before we do that, I would like to welcome Pete and Seth to the Board of Selectment. Woo! Selected over the weekend. I would also send, I'd also like to thank Patsy Ridlack for her dedication and service over the last three years on the Board of Selectmen, and certainly twenty years, whatever she was, eighteen years on the, on the planning board. And if, I'm not a gambler, but if I had money on it, she's coming back into this building in some fashion, even if we have to drag her in.
Oh, sure.
Patsy, thank you for your service. I don't know if anyone else is.
No, very well said. Hundred percent agree, well said.
So the reorganization of the board, so we need to, between us, we need to select a new chairperson, a new vice chairperson, and a new clerk. How about willing and open to all?
Well, I just saw Milkshake leave the room, but I, so I was gonna nominate.
Is Milkshake in the bit?
Oh, yeah.
Is she?
Where's the Dozer too?
I don't wanna interrupt business.
Oh, no, no, I don't know.
Oh, my goodness.
You're coming up, oh, boy.
She didn't cure her.
We can pause the meeting here for one second. Milkshake gets ten more hit, ten, ten times the amount of hits on social media than Selectmen ever do.
Oh, look how cute. She looks vicious. Ridiculous.
Thank you.
So cute.
Beautiful.
Dan, Dan, you wanna give those folks at home a little, who haven't seen, who Milkshake is?
President of Charlton has a foundation, the Hillis Foundation, and he was kind enough to donate twenty thousand dollars for purchase of Milkshake. And I got Anthony, Sergeant Scrivens, who couldn't come on up. In the meantime, Sergeant Scrivens wrote a grant for the service to him.
Oh, cool.
He was able to obtain forty-nine thousand dollars, and he could talk to you more about the particulars of that grant and how he authored it.
That's incredible.
I like to normally take all the credit. He deserves it.
Well, you always pass it.
Right, so that makes sense. But, but the, and if you could explain more for the people at home, and I'm a little, her actual purpose and job duties and little details.
Explain that.
Yeah, so she's.
Jen is Milkshake's mom, so.
So it's, it's just a good resource to have to, so that way the community and the police department, you know, have a better working relationship and, you know, she's gonna be providing like that calmness, that peace-ness, like peacefulness, like on a call, you know, when we respond, she's just gonna be there to assist us, to help people, you know, provide, provide the calmness that, you know, maybe that they're not getting, you know, when we get there, so.
We need her at all the Selectment meetings.
Yes, right. She needs to be everywhere.
Yeah, she's to keep us calm.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just a great opportunity for us to work better with the community and for them, you know, to get to know us a little bit better and for us to get to know them better, so.
She does calm it down, 'cause Jen doesn't annoy me as much when she comes in the office now with the dog, so it's certainly paying off dividends.
Uh, Dan, I think someone at the back is feeling a little left out now.
Now we're doing. Sarge, nice job in that, by the way.
No problem. Officer Rich Reddick came from Southbridge PD, he was one of the most productive guys they had, and he also had a dog, which was.
Hey, Rich, can you just explain a little bit about what Popo.
Make sure, make sure we get the Doze Man on the camera too, please.
Oh, that's not.
How did they get along, by the way? There's no jealousy.
This is their first interaction.
Oh, wait, it's their first.
Try to get everybody in here.
Pablo's his seven-and-a-half-year-old Belgian Alamo, he's a narcotics dog. We don't use him like the other dogs for tracking or any apprehension work, all we do is narcotics. He's certified in the orders of cocaine, crack cocaine, methamphetamine, heroin, MDMA, and we recently just did fentanyl with him.
Oh, wow.
He's what they call a single-purpose dog, which all he does is narcotics, which gives us the ability to sniff people for drugs that they have it on. If he does alert, now we can search the person for narcotics, who would be able to normally on the street. So he's a very useful tool.
No, thank you for.
But then, then the other night in Southbridge, he found a gun though, so he.
No, no, that was, that was Dozer.
Oh, oh.
Oh.
And his personality is great. You guys wanna pet me more than welcome to, he has no aggression in him whatsoever.
And he lives with you?
He does.
This might be the greatest meeting we've ever had. Thank you for bringing him in.
Oh, anytime.
Well, you say that, we'll probably want him to come in, just to.
Anytime, I'll call him up while we walk back together.
Honestly, yeah, it'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What a great way to start off a meeting.
All right, back to fighting.
All right, so we were, I would accept the suggestion or motion or as we reorganize the board.
So coming, Mr. Chairman, and by the way, before I do this, I wanna thank you for your year as Chair, and you've actually done, like, under very challenging, especially budgetary circumstances, you've done a very admirable job, and you've kept us like really like on time, which makes me very happy, so Steve, thank, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
That being said, at least for discussion purposes, I would nominate Basha to be the Chair for the upcoming year.
I'll take a second.
I accept the challenge and greatly appreciate your faith in me.
Do I hear a second on that, or?
You did.
Oh, oh, you did second, oh.
Does anyone else wanna be Chair? I do not, for the record.
I do not.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just kidding.
Okay, we have a motion to second for Basha as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor, say aye. Is that a roll call vote or is that?
No, no, simple majority.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Congratulations, Basha.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Vice, Vice Chair.
So continue to move things along. I would actually like to appoint, or at least nominate Selectmen Singer to be Vice Chair to be able to fill in when Basha's not around.
Second.
Anybody else?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one else here?
Chair says aye.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I don't care.
Whatever the board wants.
And we have, look, next opening is Clerk.
Pete, it's me or you, it's up to you.
Whatever the board wants.
It's up to you guys. I, I don't care.
Up to you.
I'm making a motion for myself.
You know what? I will, you know what? Pete, if you don't mind doing it, I, I would like to nominate you as Clerk.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, who wants to run the rest of the meeting?
See.
She, she said she wants to stay.
I just think it's messy, I wanna finish it off and then stuff.
I'm already all warmed up. And this is since the dogs are here, I can't, I gotta stay here now, I'm all fired up.
Mary, you can't take the dog home.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty-fifth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Chair says aye. Unanimous. Community relations in open forum, that's going to you.
Oh, my goodness. So I would do it. So for, for today, what do we have? Announcements, annual town meeting is Monday, May fifteenth at seven PM at Charlton Middle School. The yardways drop off at W, P, D, P W at Hundred Flynn Road, it's on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, ten AM to two PM. Brush and branches, grass clippings, leaves, open to Charlton residents only, no containers, bags to be left on the site. You can always visit the town website for more information. Charlton Heritage Preservation Trust presents an evening with Mass Audubon's Dr. Martha Gosh. This is on May eighteenth at seven PM at Charlton Library at Dexter Hall. The Cultural Council Art Show is officially open and in full swing throughout the library. There are so many beautiful submissions, so please stop by and see them all before May nineteenth. New death game comes to Charlton Public Library. Charlton Public Library will host a new monthly death cafe starting in May. What is that, you ask? A death cafe is the group-directed discussion on death with no agenda, objectives of course of action, no set conclusions and no judgment. The cafe will provide a safe environment to gather, eat cake, drink tea or coffee, and enjoy open-minded conversation about dying and death. It is an opportunity to share, explore and question our own perceptions of death. It's not a beer-baitment session, just an open conversation about a topic that we often find taboo. Participants are welcome to share as much or as little as you wish, and the group will meet monthly on the third Wednesday of the month, beginning of Wednesday, May seventeen, and that's from one, two, three, also in Dexter Hall. Registration is not required and all are welcome. Refreshments will be provided, questions, email kwalkerfor@mag.com. And that concludes.
No, Basha, there's one more.
There is, there is, I can get that. There is an opening for the, for a member on the Board of Health to be filled until the May twenty twenty-four town election. The Board of Health members should have a vested interest in protecting the health and well-being of the public, the ability to attend monthly board meetings and meet requirements such as completing Incident Command System, ICS, and Conflict of Interest, Open Meeting Law, Ethics, all those training courses. Anyone interested should fill out the Talent Bank form on the town's website and submit to Mary Devlin at townofcharlton.net for consideration. And we're gonna wanna do this pretty rapidly, I would think, right?
Yeah, we'll post it out pretty much today, and by your next meeting, we'll have applicants for consideration.
And that's a joint appointment for both of you.
It is, and just at, at the pleasure of the board, would you prefer the Board of Health provide a, a single recommendation, or would you like multiple candidates? If, if there are multiple people interested.
Maybe the top two, and maybe, I'm just throwing out there. It's up to you guys. Pete, this is your strength, what do you think?
If, if, if there is several, let's look them over.
Okay.
And we're not gonna get a dozen, it's not gonna be, I would imagine, most of the public, maybe three, right? I don't, I don't know.
I don't see a few, a lot.
Yeah.
You might get installers versus some health people versus, so you might get a degree, varying degree of applicants.
I can bring forward all names that apply.
Sure.
Yeah, with your recommendations.
And, and maybe with a, with a, with a recommendation of.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, that works.
Mr. Chairman, just one very quick thing, going back to town meeting again, as a reminder, next Monday, Andrew and team have done a really nice job to break out all the individual articles that are, that are gonna be on there, including what they are and really what the motions are going to be, so if you wanna go check out the Town of Charlton Facebook page and the website, you'll get a much better indication, as well as the actual warrant is out there with, with the full budget, so, again, if, as I like to say, if you don't show up, inevitably someone that disagrees with you will, so we will see everybody next Monday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and moving on to. Open forum, moving on to open forum. Is there anybody here for open forum? Hearing on, anybody at home for open forum, do I see any hands?
Onto the appointments.
Onto appointments, yes.
All right.
Go ahead, Andrew.
First appointment is for Treasure Collector Administrative Assistant. The board is being asked to appoint Ryan Ostrout as the Treasure Collector Administrative Assistant effective April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. There are twelve applications received and interviews offered to six. You previously signed his appointment letter and are asked to affirm the appointment at tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair says aye.
The next appointment is for a full-time dispatcher, attaches a request from Human Resource Director Lynn Dyer on behalf of Chief Dow to appoint Damian Bernier as a full-time dispatcher effective May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Bernier has been working in the police department as a per diem dispatcher since December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Aye, Dan, come on up! It's, it's not every day that we can, or the, the folks at home especially can put a name to a voice.
Yeah.
I mean, a face to a voice, I should say.
So, I'm Damian.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome to the show, officially. I mean, I know you've been around for a while, so.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Damian's done a phenomenal job stepping up. We had somebody leave for the State Police Academy, she's still in the State Police Academy, and he's taken her hours and really filled in, helped out huge.
Cool. Well, you play an invaluable role, Dan, so thank you.
How old, nineteen?
Eighteen, something.
But other than that, he's also older, but he's.
Oh, wow. And you live in Charlton?
Uh, Spencer.
We can forgive that. No, thank you, Damian, seriously. Good luck.
Welcome aboard, thank you, yeah. Thank you for your service.
Can I say something? This is what I like, when we are pointing people and we actually can see the faces when people coming in, and I, I believe we should do it or make it somehow mandatory for all the boards. I'd like to know who is doing what.
We can talk about it.
Keep on pushing.
This is the third time I said it. Fourth time is a chart.
Well, you start voting no.
Well, you are Chair now, you can put it on the agenda.
I will. Watch me.
I'm gonna move this along.
Yes.
It's my last day as Chair. I'm gonna use that camera.
All right, next is a resignation slash appointment from full-time dispatcher to per diem dispatcher, attaches a request from Human Resource Director Lynn Dyer to accept the resignation of Shawna Tankersley as full-time dispatcher and subsequently appoint her as per diem dispatcher. I recommend the board approve the request.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, unanimous.
And finally, we have a resignation from the Council on Aging Kitchen Manager, attaches a letter from Jennifer Trudeau, resigning her position as Council on Aging Kitchen Manager effective May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'd recommend the board accept her resignation in a letter thanking her for her services in your signbook.
So moved with regret.
Second.
With regret, absolutely, and thank you for your six years of service, Jennifer. What do they, what do they do in the meantime before they get somebody else on?
We do have a second person that does work in the kitchen that's kind of taking on some of the duties, but we're, you know, looking to fill the position as quickly as possible as to not overwhelm them.
Yeah. Good. And new business. We have no scheduled appointments, I take it?
Correct.
New business.
All right, so posting and job description for DPW Superintendent, so as you're aware, Superintendent Boskett has submitted his notice of retirement effective this August as requested by the board. Attached are the proposed job posting and description for review and approval. The board should consider how it wishes to proceed with the applicant screening in consideration of finalists for the position. What are the wishes of the board in this matter?
Mr. Chair, so what if we just say no? But in all seriousness, Jerry will be missed. I've known Jerry for a long time, and he, he has given of himself to this community for such a long time. He's been a fixture around here, and he's done an amazing, amazing job. I personally wish him the best in his retirement and whatever adventures await him, and if we haven't already, I would ask that we have a certificate created for everyone to sign and deliver to Jerry.
Absolutely. But you said you, what if, what if we say no, what were you talking about?
About letting him go, yeah.
Oh, 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 no, oh, oh, all right, go.
So Steve, through you. Just a question, and again, this is more to the board, for Lynn and Andrew more than anything. So under qualifications, we have the Bachelor's Degree in Civil Engineering, five to seven years of experience in highway construction, including heavy equipment, motor vehicle operation, and field supervision, or an equivalent combination of education, training, and experience. What's the thought around weights on those things? Meaning, when you have that combination of education, et cetera, I mean, are we putting, or as a board, do we wanna put a larger emphasis upon an engineering background or work experience? You know what I mean? Like, I'm trying to figure out what, what direction the five of us can give to Lynn and Andrew to say, if we get X amount of candidates, these are the preferred types of folks that we're looking for. And I don't necessarily have a good answer for it, I just think we should probably talk about it to give some direction to make their lives a little easier.
So you're talking about like a weighted scale?
Yeah, or just, or, or just a directional thing. Basically, like, if someone has a master's degree in civil engineering, is that but not a ton of experience? Is that better than someone who has no degree but has run a DPW somewhere else for twenty years?
So do you see our next five to ten years and that time that person would be getting experience as a growth or a sustainment phase for the town? Where they would be planning? I think that would come into it, too.
Absolutely.
I, i-if I look at these required qualifications and then you look at the, the pay range, I don't think they match up, so there's gonna have to be something.
And I look at essential functions.
If you, if we, if we did get a candidate with all these qualifications, they're gonna be looking for more money than that. I, I would thank you, I would thank you.
And the same with the essential functions, this is much more than engineering background that is needed, it has to be able to manage people and, you know, interfere with different departments, so much more than that.
See, I'm looking at, for sake of argument, that if we can get someone who has.
It's a six-figure salary, isn't it? The high end?
Yeah.
We'd get someone for six figures.
Yeah.
That someone who has that type of engineering experience could potentially save us other costs as well, but I don't wanna trade that off with someone who, again, has been doing this for twenty years and can probably manage this on his, on his or her back of their hand. But again, I think in fairness to Andrew and Lynn, we can, or, or we just say it really doesn't matter, just get us the best candidates, but I know that's, you know, depending upon what towns you're looking at, some require some type of engineering background, or more specifically like engineering, architectural, you know, you know, things along those lines. Again, I'm, I'm kinda fine either way, but, you know, to, to, to Selectmen Lance said his question around growth versus sustainability, I think we're gonna be in growth mode for like the next decade, so I don't know, so that's where I might personally lean to say someone with a more technical background that can help with overall planning, infrastructure plans, et cetera, and not necessarily the importance of, I'm not trying to minimize it, like, of, of the day-to-day stuff, because I think there's probably a, a good combination of both. In fact, the person has to have a good combination of both, but for me, I'm leaning towards, and again, Pete, I think you said it nicely, around growth, and I would look at someone who can help with that plan, so I would lean more towards technical expertise, but again, that's just me. And obviously, I don't manage a DPW, so what do I know? But anyway, that's just my two cents for the rest of the board to.
I think once we see the full package of application, as am I everything, then we can.
So I think, you know, going back to screening, I mean, I'm sure that this board doesn't wanna see every single application that comes submitted to it. Is there a preference as far as that screening phase? You know, who, is there anybody that you want specifically involved in that? Is it somebody with, in the DPW, you know, is it, you know, myself, Lynn, you know, kind of beyond that, who's, who do you want to make the determinations as far?
So just throwing it out there with you and Lynn, would Jerry be willing to? Because he is currently running the show there.
We could approach him and see if he'd be willing to, whether or not he wants to remain out of it or not, that's the only thing.
But even, even if it was advisory, only because he's done the job for this town for so long, he will know some of the aspects, for lack of a better word, which doesn't come to mind at the moment, that the job in Charlton may entail that we won't, and he may even just have input as to ask these questions or ask about this, because he's done the job for this town, he knows the town and the needs.
You know, he's not interested in the job, so.
That too.
I would really like one of the rank-and-file union folks that, that are there now on it who, you know, are doing the job every day to be on that, but again, that's just me being one of five.
Well, that makes sense. Like what David said.
Okay. Should be approached Jerry first, if he's, wants to remain neutral on it, then go and see somebody from the union.
Just give some advice or maybe some questions to ask or some things to bring up.
Even, even if he can show some transparency on what the job actually is, 'cause you get this paper version, and that doesn't always give you the full spectrum of the role, so even if he can help educate the applicants and, you know, give them a better understanding of what, what they're getting into before it might spur some more questions, too.
Absolutely.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, but you personally, again, for the rest of the board, I mean, I'd like, regardless, I would really like to have, to have a, have a union worker on that screening committee if possible.
Okay.
But that's me, I don't know if anyone.
We agree.
Okay, so we're just gonna take a, a vote to accept.
Yeah, by the way, whoever wrote this did a nice job.
Yeah, yeah. Lynn, nice job. You could tell a lot of work, a lot of work went into this, good job.
She's talking like this.
One thing, one thing we did wanna kind of bring up, too, so we had, well, we highlighted that, that was kind of a little bit of an ad, just essentially trying to figure out, we understand that, you know, the DPW right now doesn't, isn't this kind of true DPW that has multiple factions of it, even though kind of we've seen recreation get pulled into it a little bit more, depending on who the person that's selected may have some, you know, factors as well as if they work with other departments close, more closely or not, but at least try to put this as a placeholder of this position is going to work closely, if not have an evolving role with these divisions to be kind of determined at a later date.
I think that's important, because we're, if, if we're not already there, we're going to be very shortly where we need to really talk about having a true DPW, where it's all rolled up. I'm all tired of hearing me say that for years, but we're, we're getting there.
I agree with that, too.
It's always the difficulty of the nuance of what is within that umbrella and the governmental structure, so it's, it's subject to change, and we don't necessarily have that clear path, but we need to kind of proceed with something, so. But the other part of it was the tree warden aspect of it, so we don't, we don't have anybody, essentially after the election, we don't have an elected tree warden.
Do we know what the license cost is for that?
I'm not sure the lease, the license cost, I know Jerry was looking into it based off a conversation I had with him today, it was like a six-week, three-hour, three-hour-per-night class, but his suggestion was to roll that, those job duties and responsibilities into DPW, considering the, you know, essentially whenever there's a determination as to a public shade tree and whether or not it needs to be removed, well, both the highway and the tree warden are required to be out there to determine, A, is it within the right of way, and then does the tree need to be removed? If that's all expertise within that department, that may be a, you know, natural thing, but it being currently elected, you'd have to kind of appoint somebody there into the role until it was voted out of town meeting to be then no longer elected.
In the meantime, can we find out what the cost would be?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, so conceptually, I'm okay with the idea. Practically speaking, I think we need to pursue for the upcoming year of getting an elected official, whether who's the, who's a write-in or an appointment or whatever it is, get someone in there who would potentially want to go through the training. But to, just to your point of, like, until we get a bylaw change, we're, in a sense, as far as I'm concerned, we're, like, we're bound by the, by the will of the people, and because of which, and rightfully so, we, it should be an elected official, at least until people change their minds.
Right.
So maybe that's something for like a future, like, maybe the next meeting, figure out like what we can do.
All right, sounds good.
Yep. Okay, so I'll accept a motion to. So I'll accept a motion to-
So moved as submitted.
That's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair says aye, unanimous. Moving on to town administrator review.
Do we have the summary?
I'll pitch over to Lynn, if you have the-
Nope, I don't.
They want you to do this.
I have my own.
I have my own, Lynn.
This is kind of a breakdown.
Oh, would you mind one?
For everybody?
I'll give you a pass.
So the only, the only one we didn't hear back from was Patsy.
Oh, really? All right, Pete, you can give your former minutes. You've been on the job, what, 48 hours?
Not even.
Yeah, a little less, I'm sure.
We have a little bit, a couple of minutes here to-
Bring milkshake back?
Are the dogs still here?
Come on, chief. Thank you, Harry. Pete, are you having fun so far? You are officially 28 minutes into your term. Oh, into your first meeting, I should say. So far.
You're lucky there's no poll hearing tonight.
Oh, south of the pole here.
Bill always makes that into a big issue.
I don't know how.
There's no what?
Poll hearings.
Oh, yeah.
Keep my mouth shut up.
One of my favorite things.
Talk about desire to remove something out of purview that would be-
Poll hearings, yeah.
It wouldn't, isn't, shouldn't that be a planning board thing anywhere?
It's a, it honestly, it's just a MGL thing, like we just have to do it. As the executive committee, that's falls under our purview.
Just one thing, I was talking to Jerry about the tree warden.
Dan, come on down.
Anyways, but he did say that Mr. Wiansky worked very well with National Grid and he got them to remove a lot of trees that would have cost the town a lot of money to do because it, you know, impacted National Grid too, but that's something to consider, that they have a good relationship with National Grid and power company.
That's a very good point. Yeah, like you said, Seth did a really, really nice job, you should be thanked.
We were happy that Dan was gonna do it, but then he said we're gonna use a cruiser to push him over and he said, no.
I thought it was gonna use an axe, like Paul Bunyan.
As we learned a couple of meetings ago, the tree warden is a very important position.
Yes, exactly.
Entire meeting themed around trees.
I'll watch it. Harry, where'd you get your first dog, Harry? Those are a lot of fun.
From what I understand, we had a tree warden from the last for about two hours.
Well, he's not certified, but he's willing to do the training.
Which honestly, I'm fine with.
No, I didn't, I didn't think he was.
He was.
Oh, wow.
Anyone who's like willing to step up and volunteer like that? Sure.
Well, no, he was written in without being told he was written in.
No, I understand he asked to be written in.
Huh?
Thank you, Andrew.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you, Lynn.
Oh, now we gotta call our copies.
You already got one.
I shared.
Thank you. Well-oiled machine of government. Oh, is this for me?
Well, I read it up in your hands, so.
You can get this back to Andrew.
All right, Mr. Chairman, how would you like to do this?
Why don't we just go in order, I suppose? So you go first, Bill.
Sure thing. So for those at home, we had discussions with Andrew about the following topics: Board relations, personnel, financial management, general management, community relations, interdepartmental relations, and the BOS FY24 goals and objectives. So Andrew, I gave you honestly all fives and fours. I think you have been, you've done a fantastic job, but really I have nothing to negative to say about it all. I would say your financial acumen and innovation around funding has been especially important this year, around your recommendations of use on ARPA, around different funding mechanisms to keep us under the levy limit, et cetera. I think, you know, when it comes to board relations, I actually don't think you could do any better. You always keep us informed, when you're not sure which way to go, you ask, which is to me, like I often joke, and for those at home, there's a lot of Tom Anderson town administrators who want to be politicians and not managers. Andrew wants to administrate and doesn't want to be a politician. That's the sign of a good one. So I'm very, so again, very, very happy about that. I mean, community relations, again, I think you've done very well. The only things, you know, I think for the, for the, for the upcoming year that I'd like you to work on, or at least, you know, take a look at, and it might be thematic for everybody, is that, not looking into a crystal ball, but I believe this year's, well, this upcoming year's budget cycle is going to be difficult, between the schools potentially, as well as depending upon what we do with the fire substation, as well as any other issues that, that might come up. So anything that we can do to facilitate those conversations and start them earlier, so we get on the same page. And that's not to say you haven't done it, I just think this year it's like especially important. Again, I think you continue to help drive that fire substation, you've done an amazing job on that, so thank you. One thing from the interdepartmental, with all deference to our friends within the conservation side of the wing, there's occasionally tension over there, and anything we can do to mitigate that and lessen it, it's a bit, I know it's not directly under, under your purview, but anything you can do to help with that, I think would be, would be very helpful. But honestly, I couldn't be happier that you're here, and I'm glad that you signed your contract extension, and I hope you're not going anywhere.
No problem.
So, anyway, that's my two cents, very happy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I concur with, with, with Bill. Andrew's, he gets, I see, I typically don't give out fives, so don't take that personally, Andrew, or I probably would have. But the board relations, you're second to none, and you're always, you're always available, you always answer the phone. You show a lot of respect to internal and external customers, which is very important. Financial management, excellent, you did a really good job. I did make one comment, just about the, going along with what Bill said, this is gonna be a difficult budget season, and I'm not pinging, I'm not dinging you for that, but the, maybe a little more collaboration with the school department, so we don't get caught off guard. Because I still felt like we got caught off guard, but that's a two-way street, and I, and I think you got caught off guard too, so that's why it's not necessarily your. But as, as we go into next year, and I agree with Bill, it's, it's, the more we know earlier, the better. General management, you do a great job, fantastic. I can't, again, you're, you're always approachable, community relations, you, you work hard at that. And interdepartmental relationships, I don't really hear any complaints. Personnel-wise, I gave you a little bit of a dig, and this wasn't necessarily your fault, but it, it's the, it has to do with the conservation commission. And I think what you were trying to do, and I respect you for that, was, was keep it in-house, let them, let them work out their little arguing, arguments going back and forth and not elevating it, which I don't blame you for doing that, but you might have wanted to elevate that, just based on your relationship with the, with the agent. I don't think I was aware that you worked with her for six years and you guys know each other pretty well. I don't think I was aware of that before, but maybe I, maybe I, maybe I missed it, I don't know if anybody was aware with that. But that's, that's all I'm gonna say about that, because there still is an open issue and that's gonna come up in June. We'll have some discussions about that, but if you had elevated it, maybe one of us would have jumped in a little sooner. You were probably hoping it would just solve itself, and it doesn't seem like it has. But all the other boards, I, everything else I hear from everybody else, it's great, Andrew, and I think you're doing a great job, and I'm, I'm super happy we have you and I hope you stay. That's my three cents.
Yeah, I think mine was next. So I very rarely give fives, and I've never given all fives.
You said that last year, that's why I didn't-
No, he didn't give five.
In almost 20 years, I've never given all fives and have hardly ever given fives. I gave Andrew all fives. I think he deserves it. I'm not gonna talk, with all due respect to my, my colleagues, I don't care about the upcoming budget season. I'm referring to a review of his last year's performance, not the coming year. That'll be next year's review. But with all, I talked to Andrew in a previous review about also not giving him some high scores because there were some things that were beyond his control, and I even think I said back then, but I expect that will change. Pandemic's over, back to a sense of normalcy. I think Andrew has really stepped up, I think he's really growing into this role, I think he's done an exceptional job. I think he has the trust of this board, I think he has the trust of the employees of the town, I think he has the trust of their residents who live here. He is approachable, he's charismatic, he is financially, he's a whiz with this, he's just, I think that Andrew has ticked all the boxes, he's been a breath of fresh air. I couldn't be happier, I've never given all fives, I may never give all fives again. But I truly believe you earned those five. I just ask you to keep doing what you're doing, and I concur, I hope you stay here for a long time.
Appreciate it. Give it up.
My turn. So my all comments, hopefully, are viable for people to read, that's a lot of them. I would give you all the fives, and I almost did. The only fours that I gave you were basically for the personal and interdepartmental relations, and that's only because, in my opinion, we as a board, we, we at least qualify to speak for those beyond general observation. We have really no, you know, no way to know how you, how you're delegating within the departments. But as far as I know, everybody's happy with you, we don't hear any, you know, any, anything bad. You're wise, intelligent, friendly, hardworking, highly ethical, I can't imagine any better person to work with but you. And my favorite one is, and I said it last year too, you're almost always ahead of the game. I oftentimes don't even ask the question and you already have an answer, this is remarkable, it's amazing. And my other favorite thing is, and I, and I really love it about you, is that you're everywhere. I don't know how you do it, I have no idea, because I do a lot of, but not as much, and you are everywhere. All the, all the department meetings, all the fundraisers, or everything we do, everywhere you are, this is, this is hugely appreciated. Everybody knows your name, everybody knows who you are, this is huge for me. So I thank you, you make this job so much easier, appreciate it greatly.
Appreciate it. And we'll put you on the spot, Pete.
Well, actually, you know, I'll give you a perspective coming from another board. You know, we've engaged you a number of times with other state agencies, DEP. Matter of fact, you were always very supportive with citizen complaints, you were always there. So, you know, as, as coming from another board, you know, our health inspector always felt supported by you, and he verbalized that to, to the board, and we've always, you know, felt your influence, or when you, we needed support, you were there. So I concur with, you know, all the fives that we're given.
Thanks, Pete. And believe me, I mean, this is, it's not just me, it's the entire team that's here. It's you, your support, I made that, that, you know, makes me want to do a great job here. It's the team that's here that really is the nuts and bolts to be on between. Lynn, Ashley, you know, Mary, Kara, I mean, they, they're the ones that keep me on track, they're the ones that make sure that all this stuff gets done. This is really just as much a reflection on their effort as, as any, as anybody else, so thank you, thank you very much.
So for those playing along at home, perfect score is five. Andrew had a 4.54, which actually might, one of the highest that anyone's gotten in a real long time.
There's no volume.
Maybe ever.
There's no volume for the people at home, they can't hear us? Drew?
I can't say nice things twice.
Oh, we gotta start over again?
I should have, I should have recorded.
Well, hopefully it's on Zoom and, yeah.
No?
Top speed, couple of decisions.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Now we'll go for it. Nice, Andrew, well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Well done, Andrew.
We'll double check the recording on Zoom, and maybe that's an issue.
Which, Mr. Chairman, also brings up an interesting thing, that we should actually start talking about, actually, I think I said FY24 before. We actually need to start talking around FY24 goals for Andrew over the next couple of months, so. Basha, is one of your agenda items?
Yep. Okay.
Cool.
So there's no vote needed for that, so cybersecurity policy.
All right, so attaches a cybersecurity policy provided by IT Director Jeff Sorrell for the board's consideration. I'd highly recommend that the board approve this policy. And I'll let Jeff describe any of the nuances you may want to hear.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you, members of the board. So we have electronic uses policy, we have cybersecurity, security policies, but we don't have a cyber response policy. And I think with the amount of intrusions that are happening recently since the last two years, we need to have a step-by-step checklist that if somebody becomes, even if they think they're infected or compromised, step one, step two, step three, to go through these checklists and let the proper authorities know what's going on, so we can take care of the situation and stop it as soon as possible. And also, if this gets approved by the board, we get a little bit off our insurance, because it's something we should have, and our insurance company would require it.
So Jeff, shame on me and everyone else who's ever been on this board for the last several years when we had that incident. And I think you know what I'm referring to?
Yes.
We never put in a response policy after that.
Not in writing, that was, that's gone to this board for approval, to hand out to the employees in their user handbook for a guide and checklist to do if something does occur.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Jeff, the only thing is, under number two, and upon discovering or being informed of a security event or data story, immediately notify the following people of the issue and any actions taken: your immediate supervisor, and or department head, and the director of information technology. That, absolutely the right thing to do. I'm assuming you immediately call Andrew at that point?
Depending on what severity is, if it's something like an email breach, for example, someone gets credentials, I can change that on the fly, kick everybody out who's maybe impersonating those credentials, reset the user's account, and they can't get in.
Yeah, and that, I'm sorry, through the chair. The information, or the, one ad that we did do to kind of respond to that was that the IT director works in consultation with me, so it's more or less-
Absolutely.
That's the overarching part of that.
And feel free, this is, this is, I would say, maybe, you know, almost basically first draft, so if there's changes you want to make, then get back to me before we, if, after, before you sign off on it and I submit to insurance, so.
No, Jeff, I think you did a really nice job on this. I would just say, on a practical measure, win in doubt or in the sight of caution, and let Andrew know what's going on. Because the last thing we want is, quite honestly, is to have Andrew be surprised, because that means that we get surprised, which means we yell at Andrew when we get surprised.
It would only be the very, very little things, and they're easy, they're easy to surpass and go to, he's been notified on anything that's, that had to deal with changing of accounts, permissions, or any kind of issues that come that, come along that way, so.
Yeah, like I said, just keep Andrew in the loop as much as you think is appropriate, and perhaps even more than that, if that makes sense. But outside of that, I thought you did a really nice job on this. So in fact, I'm happy to make a motion to, to accept the policy as submitted.
Absolutely. Good, yeah, good job. Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Jeff, nice job.
Nice job, Jeff, thanks. Take it away. Sue the select person, Harry.
Student representative report, May 9th, 2023. So first and foremost, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, our educators at all levels put so much time and effort into what they do, and they deserve every ounce of recognition that we can afford to them and more. The National Honor Society is holding their annual cornhole tournament on Thursday, May 11th, at 6:30 PM on the turf field. NHS members are not required to play, but they are required to be in attendance, please see Mr. Stefan in room 201 with any questions. Although their regular competition season is over, the Shepherd Hill Show Choir is still as busy as ever. After winning a gold medal at the Great East Festival last Friday, they are currently preparing to host their Disney dinner, which will be held at the high school on Friday, May 12th, at 6:00 PM, which will feature Disney-themed costumes and musical numbers, fun with little ones. In addition to that, auditions for next year's show choir will be Monday, May 22nd, and Wednesday, May 24th. The Spring Band Concert will be held on Wednesday, May 17th, at 6:00 PM. We look forward to seeing a year's work of, year's worth of hard work pay off. Additionally, the Choral Concert will take place on Thursday, May 18th, at 7:00 PM. And Prom will be held at the DCU Center in Worcester on Saturday, May 20th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The theme is Casino Night, although students are reminded that when selecting their attire, there is no expectation that said attire will match or coordinate with that theme.
I'm just picturing James Bond, Casino Royale, Michael Myers.
Thank you, May 24th, May 22nd, and Wednesday, 24th, for show choir tryouts. If anyone's interested, I will tell you, if anyone hasn't seen Shepherd Hill Show Choir.
Oh, yeah.
It is, they are and have been for an extended period of time extremely competitive because they're crazy talented. I, I kind of miss going to all those, but they were incredible, the talent at Shepherd Hill Show Choir. So if you like doing that kind of thing, it's a great team to be a part of.
Awesome. And your, your last day of school is June 14th.
June 14th.
Yeah, Harry, I think we're coming back next year too.
I might, I don't know.
School or here?
Well, both, I hope.
I feel like this is the kind of thing that as many people should get to do it as possible, so I might, like, wave in favor of someone else getting to have the experience.
You're not a politician yet, what's wrong?
Bridge the gap till Thomas can take over.
We'll see.
Thanks, Harry.
Very good. Thank you, Harry, and nice job. Now with town administrators' report.
All right, just very quickly, Freeman Road and Bond Road, we have paving work that will be commencing on Freeman Road and Bond Road the week of May 15th. The paving schedule is subject to change based on weather conditions, but we have post, we'll be posting public notification boards in the area, just advising of the paving work, and keep everybody advised as needed, so.
Are they doing the full length of both roads?
Yes.
Wow.
Yep. It's gonna be the big project for this year.
Yeah, that is a big project.
Yeah, that's a serious length.
That's a lot of roadway.
Currently counting myself lucky that I don't have to drive down those.
Other business unknown at time of posting, I don't believe there is any?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you to Basha, David, and Pete once again for volunteering the offices this year. And again, really, Pete, well, I'm looking forward to serving through all the, all the next couple of years. We expect great things, Harry.
We thank you too, Bill.
What, for laying low?
For selecting all the novities.
Always make the motion, Harry, always make the motion.
And so reminder, so next meeting announcement, the annual town meeting is Monday, May 15th, 2023. Board of Selectmen will meet again May 23rd, 2023.
At which point I hope we can talk about our summer schedule.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we can do that right now.
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Second.
Yeah, I was, actually, can you read the, you do the-
Oh, we're not.
No, well, I'm sorry, we're not doing it exactly.
Oh, we're not? Oh, we're not?
Nope, no need.
Oh, it says here, we're, all right, all right, motion to adjourn, second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. 7:20, folks.
Hit the under.
Andrew.
Thanks, Dan.
So how about the fire?